I will go a little overboard, but I will ask you to go a little overboard. So I'm asking you.
The, the mayor of Virginia.
What I'm saying is, I'm sure she will because like I said.
Yeah, she, yeah, she does.
To finish, but we needed speakers coming all the time.
Yeah.
And guess what? I haven't ingratiated you guys with myself for some years now. Not to do it too much in the future, honest to God. But guess what we're on to, and I'm gonna tell you, that we may have a training facility, but here's what I'm gonna tell you. If we get a training facility, we will have it. No question. It's a need. We have to have it. Are you saying? Certainly it's a need. We're duplicating services. The reason why EMS was, 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 what was created was so that two corporate giants in healthcare wouldn't duplicate services. Why should we be duplicating the services with non-EMS? We're going to, we respond to every, everyone in the city. Seventy percent of the calls, uh, EMS not provided. It's the tribe, it's the county, it's 2B, they're licensed by, and we're more responsible.
I thought there was a policy though, if there's like, uh, not necessarily a policy, but.
State law says this. State law says if there's no ambulance service, the county has to provide it. If you knew your body, do it right, and you know the downed, the facilities, and then to collect money. Understand, this is to collect money. I'm collecting money for two corporate giants. We're supposed to collect their money. And then the city of Morgantown, you heard when you gave us that presentation. You didn't hear anything about Morgantown. The only thing you heard about Morgantown, we're easy to access.
Oh, the Mon, uh, Mon E S fellow.
Yeah, he'd say that. And then, 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 then the county commission, they're boy, too, because they give us tech about this, that, and that. That's why. Did they ever give us the opportunity to say, this is what it's gonna cost you, this is what it costs you. So it costs you nine hundred thousand, and this is what you're gonna get in nine hundred thousand. I think we can do a lot better if you're, um, that was. So my question to the commission is this. Right now, there's a volunteer, five hundred thousand, we're gonna give zero. Right now, the ambulance, we would be getting that one sure of a cost, one hundred dollars, one hundred dollars. But the cheers to themselves, you could get nine hundred thousand dollars. And guess what? We must spend thirty more months, and now we're at a hundred thousand. We can borrow twenty-two million dollars for thirty years, for twenty-two million, for nine hundred thousand. If we're gonna do that, it's about, it's about. Anyway, it's exciting because here in our city.
Are you, are you gonna talk? Are you gonna find public portion? Okay, you wanna put your name up here?
I do, I do. You should've saw it. We, we saw you guys were doing something.
Right here.
My, my, my future daughter-in-law, Katie, she did a wonderful thing last night at her house. I don't know if you saw it on Facebook. But she had locked her kids and everything was awesome. Katie Okun, look around, or look Alexander Wade, and you can see her.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll look at them.
Hey, and I got stuff.
Just, call. Whenever, whenever you, whenever it's a good time, you call.
Well, I think we probably wanna wait and get into a sprint, and hey, guess what? So you guys have a cool sale coming up, couple Morgantown jars in it.
Uh, yeah, Saturday?
Uh, yeah, Saturday. So that being said, I'm thinking that I'm getting some plane tickets here in an hour or two to head to Florida. Okay, so that being said, if I would like to bid on it, how can I bid with you folks?
Just call. Let me know. Call or email.
But could it be possible, because I would prefer to either... I don't know if you guys call somebody when the item goes up. Do you ever do that? That, here's the item coming up, and they get you on the phone. If I could do that, that's what I'd love to do, because then I could just bid in time.
Yeah, yeah, we could do that, just.
Talk to, you talk to your daughter, who talk to you?
Yeah.
Well, then you'll probably call, possibly, I would say, because she's perfect, but, uh, because I won't be there. I won't be down.
That's what I'm saying. She's, she's the person.
Yeah.
She takes care of stuff.
Yeah.
I put my name up here. Yeah, Jen was already in the course, Spock, but.
You're welcome.
Yep, build it there.
Getting a little back, showing you on your backs and stuff.
Yep, lost all our tickets.
Lost two events already.
I'm sorry.
We lost tickets for two events. Okay, we're launching a couple weeks, and then our country, we're launching. Yep, coming along.
That's a lot of hard work, dollars that we guys have.
People just think they're happy.
I think, I'm not trying to change too, and so what I'm saying is, I know you guys, I have. I told Angela, when he did one, two, three, twenty-four years ago, sitting there, I said, my thing's real estate, just political presentation. I said, do you love music? And I said, let's do this.
Yep.
He did a great job. Yeah, my dad saw pages, brother.
Yeah.
You worked for him before, right? Good group. I never, I never paid a bunch of tenures.
They put on a show.
They got me hooked.
That's good stuff.
Oh my God, fuckin' my payroll.
It's JB, right? Yeah, I saw you last time on the call. Yeah, I'll see you later. Heard you on the radio, you sound awesome.
Yeah, I'll be back Thursday promoting the fashion game, so we're starting pretty heavily on it.
I'm just curious why you thought our public safety building, you know, the whole means, or why we didn't do a public safety building? I mean, neither. It's called Public Safety Building. This is our, our public safety building. We train people there, we do certain things, we have our car, our bit there, we fix the car. And start a corporation, it's towering, it's a work ethic.
Trust me, it's going, it's going.
Maybe you should approach the chief about a job. Right. Arms of shot.
But he wants other people to deal with you.
I actually work in the U T.
There's a lot of times.
I'm sorry. I can handle all fifty-five counties.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry for.
But, uh, yeah.
Well, from a police perspective, it's very good for these.
It is very good for police, but I think it's also very good for public as well. I don't see a problem with public.
My building.
We've done, we've done events there.
That's fine, I mean, insurance, I mean, I gotta pay insurance anyway.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's why we.
Well, I do. An idea. Twenty sixteen was the first year we did it, but we basically did a.
I might work away.
So we would set up targets, five, ten, fifteen yards, and have different weapons off in, in every lane.
I mean, it helps, it helps.
Every five minutes. My daughter and I actually had third place in a couple of years ago.
Yeah, a couple of Friday.
She's twenty-nine. She was serious, I shoot her.
We had to rescue you, you were surprised, too. How many things we had on it? Those guys would be great shooters.
Yeah.
A little bit of breathing, so it works out well.
No, I love it down there. I mean, I take so much weather when I'm saying, when I'm talking, but I say I see a lot more of it. I told my wife, we were heading down, she's been down ever, ever seventeen to April. I said, Karen, I can't do it. I gotta go down, I'm gonna pack, I'm gonna pack. And I go back there. I can sell for Clarksburg, I'm, I, I saw him standing in line. He, he, he goes, go down. He said, can you do a public setup, uh, for me? Because I found the Clarksburg airport, because I leave my house in Morgantown. I drive the half-hour to the airport, two hundred. They picked me up at Sanford, my brother picks me up, door-to-door, four hours and fifteen minutes. The flight's less than a hundred dollars, I made it. Like, I just made one tonight, it was a hundred and fifty, round trip. Cost me more than my other one. You get what I'm saying, Karen? Come with? They're going on the same.
I was saying, you're right.
Now, and guess what? They, they lost their Chicago, they lost their, they lost their, so that was, you're in Chicago, so they picked up Charlotte.
You made even ghost.
Hey. You're gonna hear me speak tonight. You're gonna hear me speak tonight.
It's already done.
So what I wanna do, I'm gonna start all over.
Oh, mommy, that's why. You have it in the back.
So you got it, how are you?
Marshall, I used to like you.
I sent you an email.
There's a lot of them. Where do you go?
You ever heard of Frank Gattafaski?
Thank you.
Frank Gattafaski, his number's on the stadium.
Yes.
That's my father-in-law.
Okay, good.
Marshall.
That's right. We are Marshall.
We are Marshall.
Thank you for the water.
Is that what the flag pass thing happened, or?
Nine. Nine.
Little desert. I said, oh, and I said, I know.
Number two. How many, how many tickets, how many tickets, number one? Marshall, one, two.
Definitely, definitely better at that.
How many ballgames, a circus, who did you win with? Marshall, ten.
Not often enough. Well, often.
I get to wear my D U hat when I go to my graduation in Clarksburg.
Oh, really?
But, still have to come back to that. They've never, never seen this.
We had a basketball.
I have, it's been a while.
So they, I was a player, you know what? Cause you were a child, well, way down the town.
I would love to see, I would love to see.
They're not gonna bring in the rugby, they can bring in the other games, and that's why it's about now.
It would be great.
It's, you just know what it is. It's, it's mine, that's right, it's, it's what it is, it's what it is exactly. They don't make it if it's not worth the effort.
Oh, transfer for is killed.
N I L.
N I L, yep, and goes off.
Uh, did you see Chase, uh, traded today?
Yes, I did. Do you know who the quarterback for Virginia Tech is now? Chase for promotion.
He's a West Virginia boy, he was mad because he wanted to go W N A or three.
Yeah, that, plus, he's a party boy.
Oh, that one is. Oh, well, that'll miss, yeah.
There was definitely a party culture.
We all know you about that.
He's a, he's a party boy.
Well, he doesn't, anytime I was on his side, he was none, that's it.
Cause I haven't read it, but I don't understand.
The way to say.
I like the yellow water bottle, it's cheerful. Thank you. We need cheerful, when everyone can find it. Otter box is good, too.
Um, I, I didn't think it would work, but I filed a warranty on a case that I never owned, and they said, you want it for ten dollars. I didn't think it was gonna work.
What do you mean, you never owned it?
Well, I just like, my brother told me to do it, he was like.
All right, we're following this meeting to order. This is the Morgantown City Council Regular Meeting. We're in Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street. It's Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, and it's a little bit after 7:00 PM. If the clerk would please call the roll.
Joe Bugan?
Present.
Bill Kueckie?
Here.
Lexia Vega?
Here.
Debbie Barrett Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Selin?
Here. Everybody stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to its republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, we're going to go through multiple sets of minutes. October 4th, 2022 Regular Meeting Minutes. October 17th, 2022 Special Meeting Minutes. October 18th, 2022 Special Meeting Minutes. October 18th, 2022 Regular Meeting Minutes. October 25th, Special Meeting Minutes. And October 25th Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. And with everyone's sort of confirmation and agreement, we will be approving those unless somebody has something they need to tell the clerk about. All right.
Speak up a little bit.
Oh, yes, I can do that. Pardon me. See, and I don't hear well, so I don't even hear you telling me you can't hear. So here we go. All right. I've got the microphone closer.
Also, just louder here, too. You're competing with the air conditioning.
Fan. All right. So the minutes are approved, and now we have correspondence. Does anybody have any correspondence that they would like to make known at this time? And then we are looking at a public hearing and if we have a statement.
Glad to do that. We've received a letter from a residence concerning the proposed lease purchase of the Defense in Depth facility that should be subject to competitive bidding under the city's competitive bidding rules. This is an acquisition of real estate that cannot be accomplished by competitive bidding because the site and installed facilities are unique in nature. However, we recognize that the purchasing rules may be vague when stating that they apply to purchases exceeding $25,000. City Council is in the process of considering updates to the purchasing rules, and part of these updates make clear where competitive bidding can be used and where it cannot. In order to avoid any concerns about whether the city's rules would require to seek competitive bids to lease this training facility and installed equipment, we suggest City Council delay consideration of the ordinance until those updates are adopted. That's our recommendation.
All right. So we would just be putting this on the next agenda? Is that something that we would need to approve, or we just move it on to the next agenda?
Mayor, if you would like to do that, you can do that when the business item is up on the agenda, but I think we're just at the public hearing. Proceed with the public hearing, and then if council were to entertain a motion to postpone the item or just decline to take action on it, you do that at the unfinished business portion of your agenda.
Mayor, again, please. With the competition that you have from this air conditioning, your little voices are not carrying, and it's difficult to hear and understand what's going on. So please use your outdoor voices.
I thought it was loud.
All right. What's going to happen now is there's going to be a public hearing on this item. There will not be a vote at this time. That's going to move on to the next agenda. So if you are here for the public hearing on this item that will be happening right now. So this is a public hearing on an ordinance authorizing bill of sale, lease, promissory note, and security agreement for the First Responder Training Center. So we are opening this public hearing, and then if someone would like to come and speak, they can do so.
Good evening. My name is James Giuliani. I live at 256 Prairie Avenue, Morgantown, West Virginia. My question tonight on this public hearing, what is the time limit as opposed to the public portion, which I understand is four minutes? Is there a time limit on this ordinance?
It's a little bit longer, and you're welcome to just go through what you want to...
Well, what I'm saying is that I'd like to know what the time limits are because my understanding, we weren't going to have this public hearing tonight, but now we're having the public hearing, so I didn't bring my notes for it. But I can pretty much freehand this.
Guess what?
So what I'm saying is, I'm happy to go freehand, so that being said... No, 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 that's not what I'm reading. That's MON EMS. MON EMS is a separate issue than Defense in Depth. So I will address that. Our lease purchase, which we're purchasing, we're doing a lease and a purchase agreement. We have two separate agreements. We have a purchase agreement and a lease agreement. The lease agreement is for a commitment of 10 years. No 1, 2, 3, 5 are out. It's 10 years, okay? Now, my understanding through the charter, okay, is that we have the responsibility and duty, if these are capital improvements, just like buying vehicles for the police department or fire department or any department, that this is a capital improvement, okay? Therefore, if indeed, and I watched the meeting on October 4th, it was talked about that this was mentioned as of January 4th. Well, if that was the case, why wasn't it brought forward on the capital budget as a need, okay? Because what it says is that in our... And I don't have it before me. Maybe I can pull it up. I could pull the charter up because I would have brought all that with me, and I would have pointed out each code where we're at that says this is what we have to do and this is what we're required to do as a city of Morgantown through our charter. So what I'm saying to you is that we never looked at this. I never heard once that this was a capital expense. I heard that the money from it's actually coming from the general budget, okay? Well, how do we know what kind of money we're going to have in year 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, okay? I met with the finance director today, and we had a great conversation about this, and he obviously had great concerns because he hadn't even been informed about these certain things as far as where the money was coming from, that there were going to be civilian employees. So I think we have much more going on here than competitive bidding. We have a situation where we have a business that's gone out of business. I talked to one of the first 10 people that signed up for a forever membership, lifetime membership, and he was told months ago that they were closing. So it looks like to me that we have a business that couldn't make it. Couldn't make it, okay? And we're buying their outdated assets? How do we know how current these assets? Did we do any competitive bidding? Did we do any vetting of this particular project? Understanding, without even looking at anybody else, what did we do to vet this project? If I were to ask each and any council member tonight, and I would ask the city manager for this information, because the city finance director doesn't have. The city finance director should have this to tell you how this can work into the city of Morgantown. Meaning, how can you create any revenues if you can create revenues? How do you open it up to the public? How do you decide how you have civilian employees? How do you do all these things? What I'm saying to you is that none of these questions have been answered. So here we go, and we just say to you, okay, here, council, let's look at this. In fact, it even wasn't presented properly. It was voted on without even any kind of committee of the whole meeting, without any vetting of it. It was presented to you, and we said, let's vote on it. And then we said, no, 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 we're going to hear about it. Now we'll vote again, and now we're going to have another vote, but that vote's not going to come now because we can't do it because guess what? We haven't done our due diligence to make sure we can. Now, that being said, if indeed, we want a training center, I'm all for it. If indeed, we can afford it, if indeed, it is a need, and if we're going to have a training facility, it has to work for all our first responders, meaning the fire department, too. I also spoke with the fire chief, had a nice conversation with him last week, and guess what? Just as Chief Preston had the goal of a training center for the police department, and my understanding that it was for all parties, it would be, everybody would be, for everybody, Mark Caravas, as the former chief, had the same idea that he wanted ambulance service in the city so that we could control our emergency services, which is a total need. Right now, we're duplicating services by having MON EMS respond when we respond. And you can say, well, we need their ambulances. Okay, okay. Right now, we do. But guess what? On the MON EMS levy, it's going to cost us, the city residents of Morgantown, $900,000 a year. Now, if we can afford $900,000 to give to the county to come into our town, then certainly we could afford to explore the fact that we could do our own ambulance service. And guess what? We wouldn't have ambulances coming to our city and not carrying people to the hospital and saying we need to collect for it. Because what we would have, we would be equipped with the finest, the best equipment. We already have the stations. We already have them. If indeed, we do another training facility... But my thing is bigger. I look bigger for the city of Morgantown. I look for us to control our own destiny. Because guess what? As opposed to the county that doesn't have fire service, that doesn't have proper EMS, what I consider proper EMF service, et cetera, et cetera, to the four corners of the county, okay? We do it. We do it well. We have finely trained people. We have finely trained people. Our fire department, our first responders, along with our police. What I would propose is that we build a multi-use training facility. Look big. Let's look large, okay? And then we bring our ambulance service in. But guess what? Even if we didn't want to do that with the ambulance, if we would have ever been brought the opportunity to have ambulance service in the city of Morgantown... Because understand, this is not an ambulance bill. This is not an excess levy for ambulances. What this is, is an excess levy for MON EMS to build facilities in Sheet Lake, in Blacksville, that they can't respond to now. It takes them 40 minutes. But guess what? In the city of Morgantown, it's responded to at four minutes. Through who? Our first responders, our EMS. And guess what? The mayor even said, sometimes they beat us there. Well, guess what? Nobody should be beating anybody there. It shouldn't be a competition. And what I'm going to say to you, these two health giants, MON EMS and MON General, MON Health, Dalco D'Andalia, and WVU Medicine, who's all over, all over, outside the state, these two mega corporations want us to collect their bad debts for them? Who collects the bad debts for the city of Morgantown? I don't quite understand any of this, but what I'm saying to you is, if indeed, the county would have been responsible as a government, okay? They would have come to the city of Morgantown, just like they did Star City and said, hey, Star City, you know, you're having problems. You just ran Jan Care out of town. They can't compete anymore, okay? Why do we come to the city of Morgantown? We've proposed to them. City of Morgantown, we're duplicating services with you. How do you think that we ought to manage the MON EMS? Never did they come to you until October 4th to even present this to you. Now, the radio station would have you believe that our fire department can't be a first responder to a critical car accident. I guarantee you, we can be, and we will be, and we are, okay? And I can guarantee you that MON County is represented on the MON EMS board with three community representatives through the county. We don't have a representative on there. What about MUB? They think that we're going to take total advantage of them, okay? Why can't they trust us? How do we trust them? Because here's what it's come down to many, many times. I've heard this, I've heard this, and I've heard this. Communication and dialogue, but guess what? There's not even engagement here. So what I'm saying to you, how do you communicate if you don't engage and you don't have a dialogue? All those things are important. So I'm here to defend the city of Morgantown, okay? I'm here to defend the city of Morgantown. Because guess what? I love the city of Morgantown. Guess what? Let me go for just a minute or two. Let me go, because I haven't been here for four years. Haven't been here for four years. I'm going to tell you guys a dirty little secret tonight. And Roman West Virginia University is down 6,000 students. Our city is down in residency. We cannot grow anymore. We can never annex things in. Only a ruby house of hope, which is a good thing. But guess what? Here again, the city takes on the services, the responsibility of life and safety. But guess what? Each and every time, WVU will take another property off the tax rolls. We get smaller and smaller and smaller. So we need to watch ourselves. We need to watch because guess what? WVU is not going to bring you the construction dollars that they used to bring us. Where do you see the construction being of? You don't. Everything built is being built in the county. Nothing's happening in the city of Morgantown anymore. It's not happening here, guys. It's not happening. So what I'm saying to you is, I want the city of Morgantown to control their own destiny. I'm tired of the county beating up on us. I'm tired of WVU taking advantage of it. In fact, I would love to see WVU attend a meeting once in a while to understand the stakeholders. Right now, we're in the middle of a comprehensive plan, and I'm going into my public portion the next five minutes. So when we get to the public portion, I'm done, okay? I'm taking my five minutes here. Because I will be at the county commission meeting tomorrow explaining to MON EMS to them and how we feel they should come to the table.
One minute.
Okay, one minute. Thank you so much, Jenny. Thank you all, council. I'd like to talk to each and every one of you. I would engage each and every one of you and like to explain this in detail, how we can go about our own ambulance service, how we can go about that we create our own destiny, how we can have a training facility. But this is not the one. This is not the one. Because what we know already, that it doesn't fit the needs of the fire department. And if indeed, we can't serve the needs of all our first responders, are we paying favorites over one to the other? We give them this for that? I don't know that. I don't know that. I'm asking the question. Because again, I'm not against a training facility. I'm against this business proposal because I'm a business person. I'm a businessman. And if I looked at this business proposal, I would never touch it. It leaves me nothing. When we're done in 10 years, what do we have in 10 years? We've extended almost $4 million. We don't even know how much money because we don't know what our payroll is going to be. What is maintenance? What is the utilities? He gave us a broad range of what the utility... What is insurance on a gun range? And he talked about the revenue that we could possibly receive would be that we could pick up the lead. Do you understand, we're not running a gun range anymore. That's not what we're going to do. We're not going to get $1,000 a month. Now, understand, these people could not make this go. How does the city of Morgantown, who has no expertise in a training facility, no expertise in this at all? Because the reason we know we don't is that we have to hire their civilian employees to help us transition into whatever we're transitioning into. And guess what? I wish I knew exactly what we were doing because everything that the police chief said was very vague. He said, I can't see anything wrong with this. And he made Mr. Nesselrod sound like a god in here, is that he's doing this for us. He's not doing this for us, okay? He's doing this for his own business. $20,000 a month base to him for 10 years. Thank you all very much for your time. I've been away, but guess what? I'm back.
Thank you for speaking to us.
And guess what? I would love to help the city of Morgantown move forward.
We're done. We're done.
Because that's what we need to do. Thank you, Jenny.
Have a seat.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this one subject of the lease promissory note agreement for the First Responder Training Center? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Brian Riley. I live at 1279 Montreux Savant. I am a civilian. I work for WVU, but I also use the training facility down there at Defense in Depth. Yes, it'd be great for the police department, I understand, but there's no place for a citizen to shoot, to practice, to train. I am a certified firearms instructor, and the facility helps. It's helped women in domestic violence. They train people to do, to protect, to... They just do the training, and it's the best training. I've had people come out there and say, man, I brought my family in for my wedding. We went down there, and we had a great time. They couldn't even believe the gun range. The gun range does have some... The equipment there is phenomenal. It's like one I've seen in Pittsburgh. The fact is, will it be open to the public? It should be, I think. It should give the public opportunity to use the range so that they continue their training and further their training. I understand there's an insurance liability, but with the way it's run now, there's a waiver that's signed, people who have memberships and so forth. There is another revenue that can generate at least some. But with the training and so forth for our police department, I agree 100%. They need a facility, but we also need a facility. I ask the council to please consider opening up to the public. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Thank you for letting me speak on this subject. My name is Debbie Gorday. Mr. Giuliani does have some valid points. I do agree. I believe it probably does need a little bit more looking into, but I would like to commend Chief Powell and the city administration for trying to pursue this issue, for the fact is, we do need a training facility for the Morgantown Police Park. I will tell you, when I was working at the... We shot at the range below the Dog Pound, okay? And we had to coordinate with the gentleman there who owned property up above it. It was hard to coordinate with him because we'd have to give him like two or three months' notice when we were going to use the facility. He said, well, I'm not going to leave my property. So it's hard to coordinate with an outside shooting range. Same with the sheriff's department. Their range is out on Indian Creek Road. They are in control of it. From my understanding, from the firearms instructor for the Morgantown Police Park, it's hard to coordinate with the sheriff's department because he might call and say, well, we'd like to use the range. Well, we can't do it that day. We have something else going on. So it is hard to coordinate with a private citizen and also another agency. So I'd like to, like I said, commend Chief Powell and the city for trying to pursue this, but there are a lot of questions left, okay, to be answered. The facility, as far as the police department, number one, it would be a great training facility because it has bullet traps, not only for pistols, okay, but also for AR-15s and shotguns. Now, in speaking to a retired firearms instructor from our department, he was wanting to get a bullet trap, okay, which if you don't know what they are, it's a mechanism that traps the bullets, okay, for our range over below the Dog Pound. He said, you wouldn't imagine the immense cost just for a bullet trap, let alone a trap that catches AR-15 bullets, shotgun pellets, okay? I would venture to say that the owner spent at least $5 million on his bullet trap there for AR-15s and shotguns. It would also be a great recruitment tool for the police department. Tell people when they apply, man, we got our own indoor firing range now, okay? We can go there on our days off, practice, okay? We can go there on midnight shift, when it's slow, students are gone, cursed break, Thanksgiving break, Easter break. It's our building, and we can use it at our time, okay? We don't have to coordinate with someone to get permission to use their range. I can, you know, feel for the public because I used it, you know? On Wednesday nights, they had free shooting for females. So I've been there several times using the range. Somehow, if it could be worked out with the public could use it, I, you know, would recommend that. As far as lifetime memberships, that's something between those people and the owner, okay, who's going out of business. He promised them a lifetime membership, okay? That's between him and them. Has nothing to do with the city or the police department. Like I said, I do feel, and Mr. Giuliani has made some valid points about, you know, how long are we going to be doing this? And I will tell you, to build an indoor firing range, you're probably looking at least $10 to $15 million, okay? Because I'd say the owner put at least $10 million in that building, you know? So I agree, it is needed, and it should be a first responder. Sheriff's Department, state police, DNR can come and use the facilities, okay? Same way with the fire marshals for the fire department. You know, they're authorized to carry weapons now. They can use, come and use the facilities. You know, Chief Powell alluded to that there are some contracts, and those contracts will be honored. But I was just given some information recently that there are no contracts. Hazleton really doesn't have a contract. They just come down, use the facility to qualify, and they pay a certain amount, okay? So I'm not sure what contracts he's referring to or the city's referring to as far as those contracts being honored. But yes, there could be contracts with Hazleton, with other law enforcement agencies in the county, you know? Bridgeport doesn't have an indoor firing range for law enforcement. Fairmont, Clarksburg, any surrounding department, I'd say within a 6, 8 county radius. I don't even know if Charleston and Hynton PD have an indoor firing range. So it would be the state of the art, and I would say the equipment in there is probably relatively up to date for a fact is, liability-wise, the owner would have to keep it up to date. Not only that, but the training, the simulators, active duty simulators, active shooter simulators, shoot, don't shoot simulators, okay? City council could come and go through an active shooter or shoot, don't shoot, and see what it's like to be a police officer, the stress that you're going to be under in a shooting situation. The public could be invited, okay, to see what it's like to be in that stressful situation of a shoot, don't shoot. So as far as the facility, yes, it would be a tremendous asset to the Morgantown Police Park and to this community. But I do agree, there are a lot of questions that probably need to be researched and answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this subject and this subject only? Welcome.
Thank you. Last week, I didn't plan on speaking, and I didn't, kind of winged it this week. By this time, we're back, and I would like to thank you guys for showing up. I'd also like to thank Chief Powell for showing up. It was interesting after the last time, and I'll talk for just a second, that the next morning, it sounded like it was a done deal because we had a vote and the radio was saying, it's already done. This thing's already done. So I was hesitant to even come tonight, all right, to talk because it sounds like it's a done deal. Everybody's assuming the sale on this. But I'll go back to my dad. My dad used to say a bunch of things to me that made sense. And I remember as a kid, around this time of year, I saw the shiny object that I wanted. And I talked to my dad, and I said, Dad, it's on sale for $3. And my dad looked at me and said, how much money do you have? I said, I have $2. Can I borrow a dollar? And he said, well, obviously, you don't have enough money. I said, yeah, but it's worth $10. And I said, so I'm saving $7 by buying this facility or buying this shiny object. And my dad's answer was completely funny. He said, then buy 10 of them, and you'll save $70. And we're at that situation right now. It's a need or a want. And he talked to me about that, needs and wants. Defense in Depth is a shiny object. It's amazing. I can understand 100% why Chief Powell would want this. It's got the facilities, it's got the bullet traps, it's got all those things, and it's $10 million facility, and they're going to give it to us for $3 million. But I got to ask the question, we already have access to that facility, the law enforcement officers and everybody does, and it doesn't quite meet the needs that we have. But what I look to you guys, because you are voted in and everything, is you have a fiduciary responsibility to us as the taxpayers. One of the things my dad used to say also was, right at that question, was, I had a habit of confusing his money and my money, right? I was like, but it's only a dollar, daddy, but it's my dollar. And for you guys, just remember, please don't confuse my money with your money. When you talk revenues in the state being down, that's tax money. That's money you took out of me and my children's futures. But if we get past that kind of fun stuff, I look at the plan. As a businessman in Morgantown, and I own a business in Morgantown, where's the plan? Chief Powell came with a two-inch binder of all sorts of papers, and you know what? I scoured, and I Googled, and I did all that fun stuff to find any details about this deal, and nothing. It's not out there. Nobody's shown us a plan. Nobody's talked about it. I mean, what's the real cost? Figuring, like he mentioned, the staff, the upkeep, hey, ammo? That ain't cheap these days. Where are we getting it from? My understanding is, you're behind in this police, do I even have ammo for this facility? You got to pay that. Nobody's just going to magically give it to you. But the next thing on the question was, why a 10-year lease? And I thought that was alluded. As a businessman, I'm not going into something blind like this with a 10-year lease. That's something, that's a seller's market. That sounds great for the person who wants to rent it, but what happens if it fails in two years?[1747.25] two years? You're stuck on the hook. Now, I'll tell you, my object is if you have a municipality behind it, the bottom of that property goes up significantly if they have a 10-year lease because what's he going to do? Turn around and sell that property. And you're no longer dealing with that company or anything like that and they're going to use that shiny capital of our credit as a city to sell their property. Now, open to the public. That's one of the things we're all asking about. Talking to a number of people over the last week because it got my interest up, they average about 12,000 range visits a year, just for the range, not for the facilities, not for the room, 12,000 range visits. Fully funded, we have about 100 officers. That math doesn't add up. That means those officers have to use that range three times a month or more to get the money out of it. Doesn't make sense. That range is 20,000 square feet. There's 40 officers or so right now. 20,000 square feet, it has an occupancy of 300. Last time I checked and I'm in the restaurant hospitality business, that sounds like a country club to me. And if the public's not invited but the public's paying for it, why are we doing that? That doesn't make sense to me. We've got a private facility that's done by the police that only they can go to, maybe an occasional business, I was told, we were told last week. And where are the insurance risks? Because when we were asked about the public being involved, the chief said, "I've got a phone call out for that and I'll get the numbers back to you." I haven't seen it put anywhere. We don't even know what the insurance risks are. But I'll say, less than a couple of blocks from there, we've got pools, ice rinks, skating rinks, we've got all that there with liabilities. And I guarantee you that there are more injuries and accidents and EMS runs to those facilities than there have ever been at that defense and depth. Just because it's a gun range doesn't mean it isn't safe. Just because it's a gun range doesn't mean it doesn't have a higher level of educated people to keep people safe. We pay a lifeguard, I don't know, 18 bucks, probably 20 some dollars an hour to sit there and watch. Our most gifted things are children. We also pay a range person to train us to defend those same children. Insurance? Show me the difference in the insurance because, you know, speculatively, he said it was just so expensive that with the insurance that we could never do this. But with the safety record that they have, that doesn't make sense to me. It makes sense a little fishy. The other side, if they're going to use defense and depth, and he alluded that the police has a better background check than defense and depth does, right? They do, they should. They can get on the computer and do that fun stuff. Well, then why wouldn't you allow the public in? If you can background check me and you can see my, all my things, you can get into heavier things than defense and depth, they've never had, knock on wood, an issue, why wouldn't the police be able to do even better than that and keep it even more safe for our community? And in a sense, make us more safe? I don't understand that. And two things come to mind when you think anecdotally or whatever. First of all, never trust the man, never trust the naked man who offers his shirt off his back. We've got a $3 million facility or a $10 million facility for $3 million. It's almost too good to be true. And the second thing I'd ask, does this facility make us any safer? Because right now, I can say that, yeah, it's a great selling point. It's a country club to give our police force to attract these new people, but it doesn't. It's not going, I don't know a law enforcement officer out there that says, "You know, I would probably be, I'd love to go to Minnesota or West Virginia if they only had an indoor range." It was just brought up that nobody else has an indoor range available to them. So why do we need it? Why do we need it at the loss and the output of our tax money for these things? For a facility that we already have access to? That our law enforcement officers, if we gave them all a $5,000 raise, that would be $500,000. That's not even the down payment that we have here. And I'm pretty sure if we raised the starting salary of every officer $5,000, we might get a good reaction to that. But does it make us any safer? There'd be well-trained, but 40 well-trained officers minus 60 that we should have doesn't make us any safer. Maybe we should think about how to use that money better. Maybe you should think about that shiny object and the wants versus the needs when you spend our money. And until we have all these questions asked, that's where I kind of ask, you know, what are we doing? Why are we doing it? It just doesn't smell right. Thank you. I know at the time I wasn't on, I probably went over a little bit, but those are the questions that just keep me up at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Thank you. We're going to close this public hearing? Now, we're going to, we are not going to be voting on this this evening. Is that an agreement on that or?
Correct.
You're good with not voting on this this evening? Do we need to vote on that or we can just agree not to?
If council agrees not to take action on that item, that'd be fine.
Then we're on to item B, boards and commissions. We have a significant number of people to appoint this evening. I would just like to start on one end and come down to the other. You'll notice that we're appointing persons to the civilian police review board. We're not going to be appointing the entire board. We're appointing seven of the nine members. You'd start.
I would like to nominate Rich Burks to civilian police review board.
Everybody? All right?
Any more?
That's all I had.
I would like to nominate Robert Collins for the police review board also.
Okay. Everyone agreed on that one?
Yeah. Mayor, I'd also like to nominate Chelsea Hilton to the tree board.
Great.
Agreed.
Understand she's already attended, looking towards?
Sounds like she fit in well, yes.
That's great. Did you have any others or you're good?
I'm good.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Amy Loomis to the library board.
Everybody in agreement on that one? All right.
I would also like to nominate Nicole Wafer to the civilian police review and advisory board.
All right. Good.
And finally, I would nominate Ross Jones to the civilian police review and advisory board.
Thank you. Everybody in agreement on that one? All right. And Marcau Svega.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Dr. Daddy Daddy Boujour to the civilian police review board.
Okay.
And I would also like to nominate Maria Lola Contreras to the sister cities commission.
All right. I'm wanting just to check on the both of those, so starting with Daddy.
Sounds good.
Very good.
Both of them.
And then the sister cities commission appointee.
Yep, yep.
All right.
And Mayor, I'd like to nominate Megan Gandy to the civilian police review board.
All right. Yes. Okay.
That's it.
Great.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Rachel Petty to the civilian police review and advisory board.
Thank you. Good. Good with that?
Yep.
And then, if I may, I'd also like to nominate Dan Brown back to the tree board again.
Thank you. Good reappointment? All right. Is that?
That's it.
Okay. So lots of little letters going out. And now we are on to the public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. And that would be that you would state your name and your address and you'd keep your comments. It's three or four minutes. Always get four. Four minutes. Keep it to four minutes. And keep it civil, no personal comments. So is there anyone wishing to speak? We have James Giuliani, who assured me he's done speaking.
One minute.
Oh, man.
No, 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 I was going to present my letter and I'm not going to do that.
Okay.
So what I just want to do is follow up with the conversation we have and keep this all positive and say to you.
Okay.
How do we move ourselves forward? How do we go about looking at ambulance service? Just as Chief Preston had the desire with Chief Powell to do that, Chief Deem has the same, that he would like to have that opportunity. So I'm saying, how do we open that up to look at this comprehensively? And that's what we need to do. My discussion with the levy is not for you folks because guess what? You were left out. That will be for me tomorrow to go see the commission.
All right. Do you have more to say? And we've already had one discussion as part of the first item, so hopefully this will be.
It's a different.
A different item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Just wanting to keep things a little ruly here.
Fresh.
Fresh.
The issue I want to speak on is what I spoke on the last meeting, and that is the pay for starting police officers with the Moretown Police Department. Again, a mountain line driver makes 62 cents less. Now, mountain line driver doesn't have to go through the training that police officer does, okay? State police academy for 15 weeks, FTO program for three months, and then out on the street. And it usually takes about a year. A mountain line driver gets hired, here's the keys, go drive the bus, okay? And I'm not making light of that because my husband is a mountain line driver, okay? And he works very hard. Also, the application process is totally different. Police officers, background check, polygraph check, psychological check, okay, test, 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 a written test, a physical agility test. Mountain line drivers, every two years they have to take a CD of physical to renew their license, okay? Police officers, if it hasn't changed, need 16 hours of in-service training every year to keep their certification. So again, the gentleman before me alluded, or two gentlemen before me, alluded to raises. Yes, I would love to see a police officer get a $5,000 raise, you know, than a training facility. That would help them immensely personally, okay? You know, he alluded to, you know, bullets. Well, it's already in the police department's budget for bullets every year. They accommodate for that, how much they're going to spend on training and certification every year. The personnel, retired police officers can run that facility. There was a retired firearms instructor that retired with me, he'd love to run. The firearms instructor now is probably getting ready to retire within the next year. He'd be a great person to run that facility. So again, you know, yes, raises would much more be appreciated than a building, okay, at this point in time. And there's no reasons why Moretown Police Department officers can't make $23 to $25 an hour with the user fee, okay, and the tax base. Now, when Chief Preston was here, he did a full-page presentation in Dominion Post, which I'm attempting to get a copy of, that shows a police officer and all the equipment that they have to wear. On average, it takes $100,000 to hire, train, and equip a police officer, okay? Your 20-some officers down, that's $2 million. I'd like to know where that $2 million went. It didn't go back into the police department's budget, okay? I'm sure it went back into the general fund for council to use as they see fit. So I would like to see that $2 million be used for maybe signing bonuses for the recruiting, recruiting class that they're going to have testing three times a year now, okay? The pension, the pension, police pension will never recover the money that they are losing and have lost for being 20 or 21 officers down. You're never going to have a massive hiring. I don't care if you have hirings three times a year because the most people you're probably going to get to apply are 20. And now those 20, you're going to lose probably half, physical agility, polygraph, and background, okay? So the pension, the police pension will never recover the almost $200,000 that they have lost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So that's the end of the formal list. And then anyone else who's interested in speaking on any new subject, please feel free to speak. I knew you'd come.
Jamie Summerlin Toone on Kingwood Street here in Morgantown. I just wanted to stop by and commend the neighborhood of Greenmont for what they accomplished last night. If you happen to see any of the photos from the Greenmont haunt that happened there on Arch Street, there had been 300 people on the islands there at any given point last night for about three hours. Kids were all dressed up, parents were dressed up. It was great seeing people out there. We did have a meeting there a couple of weeks ago and thanks to Councilman Harshberger for showing up for that and just getting to see the encouragement and the energy and the excitement that the neighborhood has. We're thrilled to be a part of the neighborhood now, my wife and I. And I concur with some of the comments that were made that, you know, the city does have a fiduciary responsibility to those of us that are, you know, paying for our taxes and the things here. It's something that I feel is, you know, they have to be very responsible for and it's great to see those coming out to be a part of it. Even Delegate Hanson stopped by last night for a while to chat and check everything out. So it's good to see people getting involved and connecting and we want to see more of that. So we have those monthly meetings every month. At Gene's right now, as we grow, obviously we'll have to move out of that space, but we certainly would encourage any of the council members to stop by and learn what we're doing there in Greenmont because there's some exciting times ahead there for sure. So congrats to everybody in Greenmont who came together last night to really pull that together. And we've got some great plans for some really cool events happening over there in Greenmont in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Going once, going twice. Okay. We do not have any special committee reports. Now we're down to the consent agenda. So I'm just going to go through all of the items and if someone were to want to pull one out, feel free, but otherwise we are going to be voting on them all together. Consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending section 12905, purchasing procedures. Item B, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending section 12104, order of procedure. And item C, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending section 12124, applicability of Roberts Rules of Order. Item D, consideration of approval to purchase a 2022 Vermeer Diesel with chipper freight. So those are the items. And if the clerk would please?
No, Mayor, I would like to remove item C from the consent agenda, please.
All right. We will move that down to new business. Is that what is the proper thing to do? Okay. So now we're looking at the consent agenda, including items A, B, and D, and asking, we need a motion.
I move to move forward with A, B, and D.
Second. Thank you. And if the clerk would call the roll. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Ixia Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Saline? Yes. Passes unanimously. And now we are under new business and we'll just take up the first item that's left over from the consent agenda. Consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance amending section 12124, applicability of Roberts Rules of Order. And if our administration and our attorney wanted to just give a little explanation of that item?
I can speak for a minute and then let our attorney.
Yep.
Having sat through many, many public meetings over the last 35 years, sometimes we get hung up. I've seen public bodies, not just city council, but public bodies get hung up on specific rules related to Roberts Rules of Order because sometimes it takes, you can spend a whole semester, if not two semesters of graduate school trying to study those procedures and how you implement. And so the intent of this, as council knows, is simply to use, apply the Roberts Rules of Orders as guidelines rather than real detailed orders in terms of how you conduct business. And if there are conflicts in terms of the conducting and public business, certainly can refer back to Roberts Rules of Order. That's the way I see it, Ms. Armington.
Did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Thank you. No, I think that's a good description of the effect and the purpose.
Thank you. Could we have a motion for the purposes of discussion?
Need to approve?
Thank you.
Second.
And then I imagine that you might have something to say. And then I imagine that you might have something to say.
Um, the, when I read section one, twenty-one in general, it makes a lot of outlines for the way that council conducts meetings and does business. And the original one, twenty-one, point two-four that says Robert's Rules of Order shall govern proceedings, except as otherwise specifically provided by this article or by ordinance, to me, was meant to be a catch-all when there are questions of order, when it has not been already spelled out in other sections of, of one, twenty-one. Um, that's something to fall back on, something for a council member to be able to rely on to know what to expect out of a meeting and out of procedure. And I understand that this is allowing, you know, other parts of one, twenty-one to take precedence and any rules adopted by council. But it's my understanding that those rules are not, um, adequately available. They're done in various resolutions, not all listed in one place. Even the city attorney told me today that he has had trouble in the past getting all of those put into one location. So I think that until such time that council does adopt rules for governing meetings in one place at one time and has those written and readily available, not only to members of council or administration, but also to the public, I think having Robert's Rules of Order in place as a guideline is good. So until we have our own rules, I would like that to remain as, as stated in the current ordinance, so.
It's my understanding that Robert's Rules was something that was still listed there as, as a consideration, but that the other considerations came first. So it still was the catch-all. And that there are lots of items in Robert's Rules where we've had people that were more formal than they were being currently, where they would specifically ask permission to use the restroom or in a, in a Robert's Rules way or other types of, um, formalities that we have dispensed with or don't currently follow. Uh, and it helps, actually helps the clarity of our meetings in some ways and, um, keeps us moving forward. We're still working on having amendments done correctly. And we would still always be doing amendments correctly or incorrectly and then correct them. But this is a Robert's Rules at its basis body, but the more informal version that's usually adopted by councils. So I don't know what my colleagues feel like, if you would like to wait on this or if you would like to. But I would prefer to have this as the foundation and then work toward putting the other rules, um, as noted that would, um, having them congregated in one place, um, and working toward that goal, but having this as kind of the underpinning of that. So I would prefer to have it in this way. And we're welcome to, um, leave it as is. But I, I would prefer that we, um, begin in this fashion because it's more grounded in how we actually work. So what's, what's, what are the rest of people's comments, please?
Can I ask Ryan a question?
Yes.
So in, in terms of, um, section one, twenty-one, is it, um, is it already the case that, um, questions of, as it outlines here, questions of procedure will be decided by the mayor or person acting as the mayor?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, okay, I just wanted clarification on that. And secondly, um, so as the deputy mayor alluded to, we don't necessarily have rules adopted by council for conduction, conducting meetings all in a place where we can kind of refer?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I mean, I think maybe we miscommunicated about that. Council has adopted over, over a long period, from my understanding, some resolutions about its meetings such as, uh, our, our meetings will last no more than four hours or, or maybe that they'll, they'll end at eleven P.M. Or, um, at various times, adopted rules saying that, um, public comments will be subject to a four-minute time limit. And those aren't compiled in a, a single document or policy. Um, we did work on a policy that would attempt to integrate those and, and put them in one place and, and provided that to council. And it didn't do what you all needed it to do or, or didn't reach a consensus about doing that. And we'll, we'll continue to work on that, um, all this ordinance does with rules and say they're going to be filed with the clerk. So there's somebody, our official record keeper, who keeps those records.
If I were to, uh, I guess state my opinion, um, I guess, I guess where I agree with Deputy Mayor is just that I feel little trepidations about passing something like this without having a clear understanding of what rules adopted by council are. That's the only, because I, I just feel like maybe what if, I, I mean, I, I understand we already kind of follow those rules. But, um, you know, just what if we're pigeonholing ourselves in some way to a rule that was adopted in nineteen eighty-nine that is not something we, that comports to our values, we'll put it that way. So, um, but yeah, that's, that would be my opinion as far as this goes.
Well, we certainly could ask to begin again that process of compiling those, which was certainly.
Yeah, we, I think we definitely need to do that, no matter what.
Something that our attorney had wanted to work on, so. What do you all?
Yeah, thank you. I'd spoken to this before. Uh, the training that we have received as we attended the various municipal meetings on Robert's Rules has always been that they are good guidelines, meant to be guidelines, and certainly helpful, but not necessary in terms of adhering to the very specific of Robert's Rules. So as a guideline, I'd rather have them as guidelines and really devote our attentions to the issues as opposed to the presentation of those issues. Rather than mire ourselves up in procedure, I'd rather deal with the substance. I think this is a good move forward, and I support the idea of doing this. If we need to do some more specific gathering of our particular variations, such as timelines and public, uh, testimony, um, and length of meetings, we certainly can address that and should. But in terms of just simply adhering to an outset of very complicated rules, I think the basic understanding of the procedure and, and the, the idea of just doing this in a more collegiate, more civilized manner is more appropriate to our needs. So I support this.
Also from the first ward, do you have any comments?
Just so I have clarification because we're talking about it being an outline. We can come back to this as well if we needed to add or change anything. This isn't like it's a set stone.
Well, this is sort of like the foundational item. And then if we're wanting to collect the rules, we certainly could be wanting to collect them all in one place, which was what we had started at, at one point and could continue to work on.
Okay.
I guess I'm just a little, just to clarify, is this just to clean up kind of what we've already been doing? Um, just doing this, just to do this, um?
I, yeah, I, I think so, Councilor. And I, I think Councilor Kueckie stated that well. There are, uh, the procedures under Robert's Rules of Order are in some instances very technical. And they're not procedures that are actually followed in practice by many or any bodies this size. So to, to have an ordinance on the books that says they shall govern the proceedings of council could, could lead to some confusion about whether the process is being followed or, or what process should be followed that, um, that just doesn't really follow how council meetings operate.
Excellent.
I mean, yeah, I, I would, I would say just that, like, uh, to speak to what, what Bill was saying and everything else, like, I, yeah, I think Robert's Rules of Order can often, um, mire meetings and, um, is, if it's not used in the way that it's probably intended, which is as a framework, instead of a strict adherence is, is like detrimental, um, to, to a democratic process and, uh, to, to meetings in general. Yeah, but again, I just wanted to make sure that I'm clear that the only thing that I am, am worried about is not even necessarily worried, just have questions about is the rules adopted by council and wondering what all of those are. If I could, if I could see those laid out while I'm doing this, I'd probably be a lot more comfortable with it. But, yeah, that's all.
So we can specifically ask to work on those rules so that we have those? And we can see which of those we would like to keep in place?
And what's official and what isn't.
Things no longer are useful?
Yeah.
But like this is a framework more in line with what we're doing now and then. But it's, it's up to us.
So, in keeping with Robert's Rules, I call for the questions.
And Robert's Rules are not intended to stifle discussions. So if anyone else, including the person that brought this up, no, once you come up with a question, you're still allowed to ask. Did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I just think that it's a mistake to put press, things that are not even formulated yet in higher precedence than what we've been generally using. But I was well aware of the fact that I would bring this up and I would be alone on an island, so it's fine.
That happens.
She's not alone, though. And Robert's Rules enable me to do this.
Wait, 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 no, we're not doing this.
Well, but we can. If you don't have Robert's Rules, this can happen.
Yeah.
You can't leave the power to one person.
Please.
That's what you're doing.
Nope.
No, don't knock that because the order, the order doesn't matter.
I'm not going to.
Take out Robert's Rules of Order, there is no order.
Then would you like to be escorted from here? I mean, we have it right now.
And, and also, that's not what this does. Doesn't get rid of Robert's Rules.
It absolutely does.
Okay, well, if you read it, it specifically lists Robert's Rules of Order. But, so.
Your lawyer's wrong.
Can you please have him removed if he keeps talking? He can, sir, he can stay, he can stay. He can stay if he doesn't talk anymore. You would just sit here him or whatever you need to do. Would you please call the roll? Yes. Joe Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Yixia Vega?
No.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
No.
Mayor Selene? Yes. I believe that passes.
Yes.
Thank you. Now we're on to cold shelter plan. Uh, item A, under new business, uh, letter of request, estimated budget. Jeanette Lewis, Community Impact Director, United Way, Ammon and Preston Counties. I guess I should just make one comment. Um, pardon, has it been updated?
Yes.
Yes.
Online? Okay. So, um, an old shelter plan from last year, pardon, was online. And now it has been updated and corrected.
So you should have the letter of request and the operation and the budget.
Yes, correct. And council, I believe, received those things last week. Um, but, um, we just had a mix-up in what went into the package online. So now it's corrected.
Well, this is correct, yes, it's okay.
So if you would begin.
So thank you for having me. Yes, my name's Jeanette Lewis. I'm the Community Impact Director with the United Way of Montague and Preston Counties. And a, a couple of weeks ago, I submitted a, a letter of request to the City of Morgantown in the amount of thirty-eight thousand and forty-one dollars to help staff a cold shelter this winter um, to protect our unsheltered population. Uh, the funds that are requested, and in fact, entire budget is just for staffing the shelter for an estimated one hundred and five days. That would be twenty-four hours, seven days a week during those one hundred and five days, so day and night, essentially. All the other expenses are donated, including the facilities and, and all the items that we would need from all these, all of our community partners. Um, we've been meeting since July in the community when we, at Hazel's House of Hope, realized that we really do not have a solid cold shelter plan, again, this winter for the community. So we've been working together in endless meetings to, uh, get support and organize and, and develop a plan with multiple partners. And if you look on the budget sheet, you outlines all the partners that are involved and also on the operations sheet of all the partners that are involved with the cold shelter plan. Um, when I submitted the letter to the city, the West Virginia Coalition estimated that we had eighty-five unsheltered in Montague County. And then today, I went on the system, um, the, the West Virginia Balance of State Dashboard, the West Virginia Coalition and homelessness re, um, database. And this is people that are entered into the, the system to get services. And there's, as of October thirtieth, there's one hundred and thirty-six individuals in Montague County. The community's kitchen served ninety-six individuals yesterday for lunch downtown. So we, uh, we just know we have a huge, um, crises on our hands, especially with the winter and the, and the winter, the winter weather coming up. Bartlett Housing Solutions is our only emergency shelter in the county. They have a maximum capacity of twenty-eight individuals a night. Um, their ratio changes, I believe it was fourteen men and fourteen women. And now, I believe, last meeting was twenty men and eight women, um, that can kind of stay there. So you can see when people, uh, get to the shelter and they are full, we have no options for them. What they're given at the time from the staff at the shelter, is my understanding, they are referred to other shelters. And the closest one is Marion County. And that shelter is, um, very much county resident-based and children and family-based. Um, and have, you know, do not, are, don't take as very many occupants. That's very difficult, plus transportation there. The other option they give them is a one-eight-six-six number, which is a coordinated entry line uh, for the quest, the West Virginia Coalition in homelessness. It's the point of entry. So when you call that number, you will be told to leave a message. And it could be five days, weeks, sometimes not even getting a return call. Um, and I have talked with the Coalition about this, and they're aware that there is this type of delay. So there is no emergency plan for anybody who comes there. And last week, I, there were two gentlemen who, um, were not allowed into the shelter. And they called United Way and asked, where do we tell them to go? And I had no answer for that. And in our office, West Virginia Two-One-One, and in our office, United Way receives multiple calls weekly now, especially when the weather's changing, and folks who say the shelter is full. Um, we had a gentleman last week coming from Detox that the shelter was full. And I had no options of anywhere to tell him that he could go for shelter. And so, um, we're just trying to partner together to meet this need. Um, and we estimate a hundred and five days. And that depends on how much winter, the winter weather we have. I think we have a good plan. Um, if you, if you read the, the plan, we have so many multiple partners to make it work. We just need the funding for the staffing. And so if we can all work together, um, I'm hoping that we can all have a better winter this month, this year, than we had last year, for sure. Any questions?
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Um, thank you for presenting, Jeanette. Could you describe or tell us who you have listed as committed partners so far? I think I have it, but I just want to make sure.
No, no problem.
And the amounts?
Uh, West Virginia Catholic Charities, they are occupancies of the Hazel's House of Hope. And they have agreed to be the fiscal agent for this project. And that meaning that we will, we need invoice monthly for expenses and we will have payroll. So they have agreed to be the fiduciary responsible, take that responsibility on. Uh, we have Salvation Army who is allowing us to utilize the space at Hazel's House, this House of Hope, plus serving meals, providing all the cots, um, and, and a lot of the supplies that we'll need to run the shelter. Uh, Morgantown Community Resources is allowing us the facilities at no cost. So we don't have any utilities or expenses where that is concerned. Um, the ramp, uh, more, uh, ramp, Morgantown Ramp is an organization that is developed in the community to help our unsheltered, their outreach organization. And they are on board along with First Presbyterian Church. Um, they have, they, we have some funds to, um, place people in hotel rooms this year if they report to the warming shelter or at Bartlett and don't fit into a mass shelter such as children and families. And we, we, and if we have those kinds of situations, we are able to network and place them in a hotel until we can get housing for them. So we have this great organization and all these people plan to help, and the only funds we're asking for is, is payroll, and you can see that's for a hundred and five days, we must have, we're asking for one person to be the manager of the program, and we're estimating about six hours a day for a hundred and five days, and that person will be responsible for making sure volunteers are there, staffings are there, supplies are there, resources are there. We will work with these folks as they come in to meet them where they're at, to get them in the system for HMIS, if they, if they're not in the system, to coordinate, to call resources, to meet them where they're at, and try, hopefully get them in even addiction recovery programs, so we will do that while the folks are, if they're, if they're wanting these types of services, we will certainly help try to help meet those needs. We have folks who are deploying the transport, if the buses, the bus runs till eight, if we happen to have someone that they find unsheltered in a snowstorm, they can transport them up to, at all hours of the night for safety. So we have to have two staff per, people on there all the time, twenty-four seven, and then we have multiple, about thirty volunteers who are ready to come and be there, so we'd like to have two full-time, two staff people paid there twenty-four seven, as well as many volunteers that we can, at least two to three volunteers, maybe even more, and that's critical to make sure that it's operating safely.
Good, I'm sorry, this is a follow-up, from a cash funding contribution standpoint, so far, your community foundation is on board for fifty-five hundred?
That is correct, your community foundation has, I will, they'll give us that check on November the fifteenth, and then Mylan Pushkar Foundation, we received a check yesterday for fifteen thousand dollars for the project, yes.
Great, and has the county commission?
We have not, I have not heard a response from the county.
Great, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for Jeanette before she leaves.
Yes, please. Yes, don't leave yet.
I won't, I won't.
We'll figure out a few questions, sorry.
The, the hotel room option that is happening now, did I hear correctly that folks in that program will need to first present a report to the shelter, Bartlett House, to be vetted, essentially?
That is not, no, that is not true, so, so how, that program, we were, we were very blessed in the county to receive a hundred and forty thousand dollars in emergency food and shelter money this year, and the priority for that funds we meet as a committee was shelter, mass shelter, and then other shelter, and so, first Presbyterian Church applied for the other shelter portion of those funds, which means that we can put, place people in emergency situations in a hotel room, but it is not a extended stay, it is, one person really only qualifies for up to thirty days max, that's the whole year of staying in a hotel room. So this has to be a temporary in a hotel room for women and children until we can get the coalition and services on board to get them housed and, and provide case management. They, the hotel, it cannot be, we, there, this group has it all organized and worked out, we have to have case management once they're placed in the hotel room, for sure, and that is not a mass shelter solution, and we hope for the mass shelter, when people report, it won't quite fit to stay there, then we can get a hold of that group to get them placed in the hotel.
That's one of the questions that I've been hearing is, you know, given the option of a hotel room or the mass shelter.
No, that is, no, that's, that's not an option.
So knowing that there's like some sort of, of process for that, and you did say that the, the staff at the shelter, at the seasonal or winter shelter, will be working to get people enrolled in the HMIS system?
Absolutely, absolutely, if we, the people that are involved most generally know the folks that, you know, have been in the system for a long time, if we have any new folks reporting, absolutely, that's crucial, and we will work with, I've already spoke with the coalition, they're on board for us just to pick up the phone and calls and make those referrals, that's critical too.
Okay, I've, I've been working, as you know, with the Built for Zero initiative with the coalition, and one of the things that is sometimes lacking in our area is adequate reporting and getting people in, integrated into that system so that we have an accurate count and an accurate idea of, of the population that we're working with and what kind of services are needed.
It's critical we all work together for wraparound services, right? Yes.
What other questions do people have? Is this, my understanding is this is in the lobby, the lobby area, the area of the vestibule where it was proposed to happen last year?
Yes, it's, it will be, we're gonna use the space between the lobby and the Salvation Army kitchen area, you know, the, in between the dining area, yes, and where it has a little fireplace and the bathrooms, and it's.
Yeah, it's a nice, nice spot.
It is.
How, how many people do you think you can fit in there?
Last year, we had a, we had about thirty, I think, max, in there, so we'll have to, that'll be an issue too with the justine as we go, but.
And, and then, and then what happens during the daytime?
That is, if, in the operations, so for right now, at Hazel's House of Hope, they are in the process of, of remodeling, and we will have a, a day center there, hopefully soon, by next year, yes.
Yes, that we've, we've been hearing about this.
Yes, so that's, that's one, something that's, that hopefully, and they are working on the back room now to put in some showers and some washers and dryer facilities for the day room operation, but currently that.
Was that in a different location, that by the food area?
Yes, back, yes, out past where the, like, the wedding room, and out, the old wedding room.
And then the actual room that was gonna be the day room, what's going on there?
Correct, correct, you know, that's been, things have been delayed with the, the roof issue and the construction up there, so that is hopeful for next year, and we're not sure even the deadline for that, so currently, our plan is for during the day, if you, to, Health Right is still going to be, they're gonna be moving, but they'll have their buildings downtown until the end of March. So we've decided to run the day, during the day, from seven-thirty to three there, and then they get on the bus and go up to Hazel's House of Hope for, for dinner between four and five-thirty, and then they just stay for the night, until we can get the day center up operating, and that, for many reasons, right now, we have Lauren's Wish and other recovery places organizing at Hazel's House of Hope, and that area between the, where we're gonna use for the cold shelter during the day can maybe be an issue when those groups come down for dinner, and those groups come down for outside breaks, there are, it's, there's, there's, can be HIPAA violations, there can be, you know, we just need to be sensitive to the demographics of where, they're in different places, you know, and we need to be sensitive to that, so I feel by having people during the day inside near the dining room may take away from some of the needs of their other programs there, so by having it, once we get the day room, we'll be separated during the day, and we'll have a place, we won't have, they won't have to go to dinner and be, you know, and, and be, they'll be more private, so for now, this seems like our best solution, until we can get the day room and everything going at Hazel's House of Hope, and as soon as we do that, then we'll have that option all the time for next year.
So, so we were looking at this, we were looking at the funds that we proposed to use last year, that I'm not certain, were those funds from last year used, city manager? Do you remember whether they're, I, I don't, I don't think they were used or they were minimally.
Very, very little, very minimal.
Minimally used.
Minimal was used, actually used.
So I have the resolution from last year that was, they're willing to put in twenty thousand dollars, there's also another proposal that possibly we match what the county does, and I don't know what, I don't know what the will of council, did you want to talk about?
I think the county's not taking this up until next week, and this is not, just to clarify, this is not an upfront payment, this is invoice-based, as we had previously discussed?
Yes, correct, like, yes, I think that's the best way to operate, is invoice-based.
So I didn't know what council's pleasure was on this.
I worked very hard to get us up to the twenty to thirty thousand dollars last year, and it was not used, I am supportive, again, of doing something similar to that, or whatever others.
So this, so this would be a cap of the thirty-eight thousand, based on need? Is that what, is that correction, is that fair, would you say that?
That's the request.
Right, right.
So then it's what we want to do with the request, if we wanted to partially fund the request and see what happens, if we wanna fund the request up to that amount and after some certain initial amount, have it go through the city manager, or come back to us, or something, so that we have some latitude or control over it, knowing that. Very little of it got used last year, but knowing that every situation needs a fresh start.
And every, it's a complete change from last year as well. Also, I can say to you, and not, if, since we're running out of time, I have exhausted every possible funding resource that I have, and I was very grateful from Mylan and your, your community foundation, if, if we do not get the total budget, we can't open, we can't operate, I mean, I, I don't have any other answers, so it's either the whole budget for the, and then just staffing, if we can't get that, then we can't operate, and I, that's just, that's just, I don't have any other, I don't have any other evidence.
So are you operating automatically on certain days, or?
We're, we're, as soon as we receive the funding, we already, we, we've got a few folks ready to be hired, but we still have some hiring to do, so we'll still have a couple of weeks of just getting it going, but I have to have the funding secured before I can hire people.
Jeanette, I think, I think your question was, like, are, is there, are we doing temperature, or are we doing season?
Temperature.
Yeah, well, that's kinda hard, we, we're kinda saying it's seasonal, 'cause if it's forty-five and pouring down the rain, we're not gonna kick people out, or if it's, if it's, we know it's gonna get, be four-fifty and then thirty-five in another hour, so we've got our, our folks working it, will have to kinda gauge that with temperature, 'cause it's, it can be, you know, it can be scary, fifty, people can, you know, you can, you can, yes, so we've kinda gotta gauge that and, and monitor that a little bit, and I don't really wanna say, 'cause if it's under thirty-five, everybody out, or if it's over thirty-five, you're out, if it's thirty-six, see ya, that's a little tough, so we like to do it seasonal and make, just make sure that we, 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 you know, we, I think we have competent people to, to judge when we should be open, and I'm hoping that it's not, no more than a hundred and five days.
If I may add additional information, I spoke with a representative of Morgantown Community Resources this evening on my way into council, and he indicated that January is when they are anticipating having that day room open there, but they do not yet have a committed party to running it, so the staff that Jeanette is talking about would still be needed for that, but they have made a commitment to finding that organization and getting them in place as quickly as possible to run the day room year-round, and they do not anticipate this being an ask again next year.
Yes, that's.
That's what my hoping for, Jeanette.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay, 'cause that's, that was the other concern that people had was, I think, every year that I've been on council, the request comes now rather than during any kind of budget season, and.
Because I don't think that.
We respect our volunteers and people that are trying, and, and paid staff who are trying to scrounge this together every year, but it would be refreshing.
And it's really unusual for the United Way to be requesting to operate a homeless shelter, so yes, I understand that.
Yes, so if, if at some point, we could get to the point where it came as a budget request to the county and a budget request to the city.
During regular grant cycle.
It came a whole year ahead of time.
And from an organization that probably should run the homeless shelter, correct?
That would be so. Well, yes.
Yes.
Just, that someone, whoever's willing, would do that and would make a budget request ahead of time, whenever we all get our collective act together to do this.
Totally agree.
That would be great.
Yes, I'll work on it.
Madam Mary?
Yes.
It's a pleasure to see that you've got the cooperation that you have, that's.
We're very blessed, community.
That's not always been the case.
Yes.
So that, that is a success. I, I think this is a need that we need to support, you know, our past experience has been that it's a reach that's within cities' capabilities, and certainly, we don't wanna abandon this particular population to the outdoor cold weather, and we would need to do something about it in any case, it's better, I think, to act now with some certainty, and proceed so that they can put this in place so that we can be ready, so that we can be ready.
So when, when is that room open?
It's now.
No, the, the day room projected to be open?
It'll be like January timeframe.
January.
And for operating off in the invoice request, I mean, if that gets up and running and we don't need all these funds, I think it's, it's better to have them and not need them than, yeah, the other way around.
I agree.
And just to speak to the hotel program a little bit more, so, as Jeanette said, it's not necessary that somebody enter any kind of program in order to need a hotel room, the idea, though, is that people are qualified to make the decisions on people who cannot stay inside of a mass shelter situation, make those situations for, or make those decisions for Morgantown Ramp, so, so that we have an understanding of people that can, that can go there, and the thing is, like, it's not unlimitedly funded, so there's very few amount of people that we can, like, actually accept into, into that program, we have, like, probably close to twenty volunteers now, but the funding of this program directly feeds into the, like, efficiency of that program, because it's, it, the kind of people that are qualified to be at these places are much more qualified than the volunteers that we've been able to wrangle together to, to get people into hotel rooms, I mean, there are some people that are volunteering that are extremely qualified, but this is what they're paid for, you know what I mean, so.
So the hotel rooms, the budget for that is?
They receive twenty-five thousand dollars for the hotel rooms, eight thousand for food, and I believe, like, five thousand for hygiene and supplies?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just a, just rough numbers, so we have some idea what's going on.
And it can be, April, the spend is right now is to be spent by the end of April twenty-twenty-three, there may be a little extension on that, but that's the, that's now, and what we don't spend, we send back, so, yeah, so, yeah.
Jeanette, thank you so much for your work on this, a lot of us were there with you last year, last year was really rough, I drove people and they told me that they came from all of these other places because we're the only place that they can find help, and I also wanna thank Brian for doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work to find grants with other community members to get this happening, it's a lot of emotional labor for you, so I can't imagine what it's like to have to turn people away, so thank you so much for bringing this to us and for working with other community members too to make sure that we can have a successful winter and not have the winter that we had last year.
I'm just thankful for those community members, they're amazing, I think Brian can attest to that.
So this sounds like a group that wants to fund fully this request.
Yes, please.
I would like to, yes.
Am I correct there? Yes, so you are?
Somebody make a motion.
All right. Move to approve? If there's somebody that's willing to do that, that'd be great.
Second.
So you're approving?
Thirty-eight.
The full amount, yes?
Forty-one.
Up to.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
All right, is there any other discussion? Did you wanna state the full amount so that we're, have that in the?
Thirty-eight thousand forty-one dollars.
Pardon?
Thirty-eight thousand forty-one dollars.
There we go, thank you, and then, if the clerk would, unless there's some other discussion, if the clerk would please call the roll. Joe Bugnon?
Yes.
Phil Kueke?
Yes.
Yixie Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette, and thank you for working on that original number that you sent, it's much more.
Thank you, Jeanette. And thank you for working on that original number that you sent. It's much more
Much more palatable now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeanette.
All right. Now I get to read the long one. Low water left. All right. Consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance to authorize and approve, a little letter I, the conveyance of property by the city to the Morgantown Building Commission, the Building Commission, in connection with the design, acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of improvements to certain recreational facilities of the city, including renovation of the Morgantown Ice Arena and construction of a new swimming pool at Marilla Park. The projects. Uh, double letter I, the leasing of the property associated with the projects and any, any additional property that may be required in connection with the financing of the projects by the city from the Building Commission pursuant to one or more lease agreements. Triple little I, the sale and issuance by the Building Commission of its not to exceed twenty-nine million dollars principal amount of lease revenue bonds in one or more series to finance all or a portion of the costs of projects, to fund one or more debt service reserve funds if required, and to pay costs of issuance of the bonds and related costs, and for the execution and delivery by the city of one or more lease agreements and other documents in connection with such financing. So that is item B, and I would turn that over to the city manager.
I'm not sure I can give any more, uh, detail than what you just, it, it might be beneficial for uh, the public to understand that this includes, uh, the estimated cost for the Morgantown Ice Arena is, is between ten point four and eleven point, uh, five million dollars. That's, that's preliminary estimated cost, whereas the, the, uh, construction and renovation of that area of Marilla Park, uh, the Marilla Pool Project is, is estimated about between nine and eleven million dollars. And, uh, this would simply provide, secure the revenue bonds for, for the issuance of those, uh, of those bonds. The, the, the foundation for the issuance of those bonds. An agreement between the city and the Morgantown Building Commission.
This would also include financing costs.
Financing costs, yes. Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Symington?
Thank you, Kim. Uh, I think that just describes your projects well. This is a, a single bond authorizing ordinance that will cover the authority for two separate projects, but will have comeback dates before council to specifically authorize those project terms. This is a lease revenue bond transaction that provides for transfer of the property that's going to be approved for the Ice Arena and for the Marilla Pool to the Building Commission, which will then own the property and lease it back to the city. The payment for the debt service will be made in the form of lease payments from the city to the Building Commission and will be funded by, uh, the sales tax allocation to Bo Park. Previously provided to council and had the project underwriter Cruisin Associates describe to council the projected debt service coverage from the expected allocation of sales tax funds to Bo Park each year, um, considering the expected financing costs and, uh, showed that it's within the available sales tax funds allocated to Bo Park in both of these projects. If the bond authorizing ordinance is adopted by the council and the commission, both of which are scheduled for November fifteenth, the proposed project schedule would have, uh, bidding documents going out for the Ice Arena project in early December with construction to start in March. And the design for the pool is not as far along, but tentative construction begin dates are end of May to early June. The, uh, bond sales themselves will be authorized by separate supplemental resolutions that will be presented to council and would be timed so that they can be authorized when the city has bids in hand on the construction projects and knows the actual cost of the projects.
Thank you. I didn't know if, um, Bo Park had anything that you All right. She's here, just wanted to Um, is there a motion and then we can have discussion? Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And then, do we have questions?
I just sure hope it comes down from that twenty-nine million a little bit. Let's, let's bring it down.
That's the ceiling, that's not
I had a question.
The floor.
But I feel like it was answered before, but I just like, I feel like I can't remember. The, where the space where the old pool was, that's a skate, a new skate park?
Possibly.
Okay.
For a future upgrade of the, um, Marilla Skate Park, yes, we actually are working with Thrasher Group.
If you, if you wouldn't mind, we have to have it on.
Sorry.
Sorry. No, it's good.
I made you come up and talk.
Sorry. No, it's all right.
Yes, possibly a space for an upgraded Marilla Skate Park. Uh, but we are working with the Thrasher Group right now to revision the entire lower Marilla Park and get some concept designs with regard to that. So we are not, um, we're not married to any space for that skate park, but that's the first thought.
Okay, okay. Um, and then the space where the skate park is now?
Um, Pie in the sky. Pie in the sky, yes. Um, so yeah, that's part of the revisioning.
And then, we did, uh, I feel like I, I had COVID when we talked about this, so.
You really did.
Yeah. Did, um, did, was there, uh, plans for the, the rail trail connection like to the new?
There were, and there were plans hopefully for tennis courts, um, also, because those need upgraded as well. So that whole area, um, down in lower Marilla Park, and yes, an upgraded rail to our entrance.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Anything else?
Is there anything else that anyone, now that we have?
Now that you've wrangled me up here.
Councilor Buganum, do you have any questions?
Do you know?
All right. I, you're just the only eyeballs I can see, so I have to ask.
I need to have like a mirror so you can see.
All right. Thank you for that clarification, and it really is, um, I attended one of the last meetings where they were talking about tennis court sites and they really were looking at, they really were looking at the whole, it's, they're definitely, it's definitely in the beginning stages.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Any other?
Move to approve?
All right.
Second?
We've got that. Now we're, now we're calling the question, if you would. We've, we've really motioned this. If you would, please call the roll.
Joe Buganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ixie Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Item C, consideration of approval of a reimbursement resolution which would authorize the reimbursement from proceeds of lease revenue bonds to be issued by the Morgantown Building Commission of certain costs related to the design, acquisition, construction, furnishing, and equipping of improvements to certain recreational facilities of the city, including renovation of the Morgantown Ice Arena and construction of a new swimming pool at Marilla Park that may be paid by the city or the Board of Park and Recreation Commissioners of Morgantown, West Virginia, prior to the issuance of such lease revenue bonds. So this is the reimbursement resolution that goes with. So if the manager had something to
Certainly, the, uh, this would authorize the Morgantown Building Authority or Building Commission to reimburse this, uh, the city and or Bo, Bo Park for any, uh, expenses incurred uh, prior to the issuance of the bonds on, on these particular projects.
Anything else to?
Uh, thank you, Kim. Briefly, this reimbursement resolution is, uh, required to allow this use of the funds for project costs incurred before the bonds are actually issued. Um, it will, it will let the bond proceeds be used for costs incurred up to sixty days before adoption of the reimbursement resolution. So commonly, those are design costs, the cost that Bo Park has had to spend on its architects or engineers to uh, prepare the projects to get them ready to present to council for financing. So recommend that council approve the reimbursement resolution.
Any questions?
Move to approve the resolution. Second?
Any questions after that? Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Buganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ixie Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance of city council which would amend Article seven thirty-three of the city code, uh, regarding the city's sales and use tax. Um, and one or both of you would like to speak?
Like, I, I think, uh, council received an introduction of, of this ordinance from both council and from myself at the committee of the whole. This updates the city's previously enacted sales tax ordinance, uh, in substance to provide clarity for, uh, bonding authority which make these bonds more marketable, and also to make specific allocations within the ordinance of the proceeds of the sales tax which are deposited in a special revenue fund. Uh, those are twenty-five percent allocation annually to Bo Park, a twenty-five percent allocation to fund the police and fire pension funds, and a twenty-five percent allocation to the capital escrow funds. Uh, those specific allocations track, uh, at least for the past couple of years, how council has generally ended up allocating those funds, but they'll now be, uh, enacted by ordinance and, uh, specifically direct the funds to those, uh, locations.
Wonderful. So motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, if you would call the roll.
Joe Buganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Ixie Vega?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes, passes unanimously. Thank you all. Looking on to the city manager's report.
I just have a couple of items just, uh, that yesterday, uh, city staff spent most of the day in a retreat discussing what they uh, consider the evolving, uh, needs and concerns of city administration and city operations in preparation for the council to, and that was the other part of my, my, my reminders that, uh, next Tuesday night in preparation for the council strategic planning retreat, which will be held next Tuesday night, beginning at six o'clock. Hopefully, the, the discussions that were made, were had by the, uh, by the different, uh, heads of the departments of the city will be beneficial. That information might be beneficial to city council in consider, in considering kind of this next, this next year, what is the blueprint? Where, where do we focus our energies and our attention? Sometimes we tend to get really fragmented in the way we see things, and, uh, it's really beneficial to our staff that we can help them fo, uh, focus on, on things that are most, uh, significant to, to the community and to council's goals. That's all I have.
That's in the trading room, please, trading room.
Good to remember, thank you. And now we have a report from the city clerk.
Yes, Mayor, um, really don't have much. Um, we had a busy October.
Busiest October ever.
Probably the busiest ever. Um, but it was a fun month, uh, especially for municipal government week and, um, all of the things that we did, um, throughout our community during that week. I, I won't, um, I'll let Joe, or Councilor Abu, um, share, uh, about the mock city council meeting. It was really fun. Um, we had a great time, uh, so I'll let him share information, uh, on that and, and the read aloud um, with those who attended and, um, the If I Were a Mayor letters. Just a fun week, uh, and then also, um, showing our appreciation to the city employee who had, has been here for thirty-two years, um, which is, um, something to say about someone, um, that doesn't happen very often these days. But anyway, uh, I appreciate your cooperation and your assistance during that week and, um, it was a great week, so, um, and I'll, I'll share with the city manager, uh, I did have a good time, uh, yesterday at our, um, department head, um, day and, and the speaker was very good and engaging and, um, so we appreciate that. Thank you for doing that for the department heads. It, it means a lot. And, um, those, uh, other supervisors that were included, I know that they appreciate it too. It's nice to get away from the office and, and, uh, kind of take us back and remind us what we're really here for sometimes.
Most of them wore costumes too.
Yes.
She, she won one of the costumes.
Wait. What were you dressed as?
Uh, I was, uh, Mohegan.
Oh, okay.
Uh, Mohegan, yes. Um, so anyway, um, thanks. City manager has, uh, it was, it was a good day. Uh, so anyway, uh, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Report from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we have been doing some work to update our form contracts. We, uh, we have a variety of those for various projects for the city. Um, the, the largest of those are for, for street projects. Generally, we use the engineering joint contract drafting documents. Um, and then for building projects, we commonly end up using the AIA, the American Institute of Architects documents. We've prepared a set of supplemental conditions for Bo Park's use in conjunction with the BO one oh one, the Form of Owner Engineer Contract that will be adapting for general use by the city for those types of projects. And then we're working with the, uh, engineering department to develop a parallel set for the, uh, form of contract between the owner and contractor for those projects as well. Uh, along with reviewing our existing set of other form documents for, uh, for smaller projects or, or more particular projects and, uh, and keeping those updated. Kind of along similar lines, uh, and in part at our, our staff retreat. We, uh, we're planning to, uh, do another staff training for our staff who work with those forms and with our other policies to become familiar with them, to address any updates, uh, or to introduce any staff who are new to their positions to how to work with those and, uh, who to coordinate to get their projects done. And, um, hearing the, the new board and commission appointments tonight, I think I'll catch up with the city clerk to also do a, an orientation and training for new board members. And with that, I will conclude my report.
Excellent. Council members. Um, Council Butcher, would you like to start? Sorry.
No, you're fine. Um, I was prepared this time, uh, sort of. So, uh, since we last met, um, I think our community had a lot of, uh, things going on, and it was, um, really encouraging to see the different events that we had throughout the city. Um, the, the night of, um, MHS homecoming in the Mohawk Bowl. Um, it was really hard to get around town, but, um, that was also really encouraging um, to see how many people were out and about, um, like everywhere that I looked and, um, it, it felt like it had been a long time since it took me forty minutes to get across town, so that was cool.
Cool.
I, I, like, you know, it's, 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 yeah, it shows signs of growth, right, so.
Things are happy.
Yeah. And, and, uh, just like the kind of energy that was all throughout. South Park, Greenmont, um, Ixia's Ward. Just everywhere that, uh, we went throughout that time was really cool. And then the same thing, um, uh, yesterday during trick or treating. Um, we went like a different way than we usually go, um, for our trick or treating this year. And it was just really cool to see how much people got into it, how many people were like outside, out on their driveways. Uh, a lot of people that I hadn't seen before, uh, who were like fairly new neighbors, um, and, and things of that nature. And then, of course, um, my kid being cute. So, you know, that was really, it was just, it was really nice to see our community together in those ways, especially with an election coming up, uh, to see us all, um, kind of celebrating the things that are great about, uh, Morgantown. And we do have an election coming up on the eighth, so make sure you go vote, uh, and, uh, vote early if you can. Um, I did want to comment on one thing that was mentioned tonight, um, because if you can. I did want to comment on one thing that was mentioned tonight, because I thought it was, it was a comment that stuck with me, and I thought it was really simple but profound to me in a way, which was when it was asked, does this facility make us safer? And I think that that's a pertinent question to ask, especially in terms of the amount of funding that we're spending on this. And I think it's something we should be asking ourselves about this facility, but also how we spend money in these areas going forward, in a lot of areas, obviously. And I think that is like a pertinent question to ask. It is something that we should, we should interrogate and investigate. And, you know, the answer to that question could be yes, but it is something that we should be certain of and truly, truly ask those questions. And I thought that was, that was a good question. So I just appreciated that. Thank you.
Go next, Mr. Harshbarger.
All right. Thank you. Today marked the first day the public works began leaf pickup along the city streets, and they were in my neighborhood in Sixth Ward, and it was just, I was ready for them, and I had, I gave them a challenge. So it was awesome to see.
Isn't that great?
Our streets are so picked up through there. It's a wonderful service, and you can call to make sure that you're on that list. It's, instead of bagging the leaves, just get them down to the road. And for the rail trail update, the Collins Ferry Connector in Suncrest, the contractor was awarded the bid. Lowest qualified bidder has been selected. I, I'm not positive that, what communication has occurred with that contractor, but I'll find out tomorrow, Thursday evening in our meeting. But hopefully, now that it's been decided who will be that contractor, the work can begin very soon and ideally be completed before spring. So that is an update on the Collins Ferry Connector. That's all I have.
Great.
Thank you for that update.
Tipping, Mayor?
Just a couple of upcoming things. The Woodburn Association is, it looks like the weather will be nice on Saturday, so we are going to try to fit in one additional cleanup of our adopt a street, Charles Avenue and Richwood Avenue and Whitmore Park. So we will be meeting at the top of Whitmore Park behind Mario's Fish Bowl at 10:00 a.m. on Saturday, the 5th. Before that, we are actually going to informally gather as a neighborhood at the new mural at the Woodburn Complex, former Woodburn School, to admire, discuss, enjoy before we clean up. So everyone is invited to join us for that. I think maybe if you're in the Greenmont neighborhood, you can probably get in touch with those folks. They are also planning a cleanup for Saturday, the 5th. Last I heard, they want some supplies from the cleanup project, so we're happy to provide that. The Jerome Park Neighborhood Association will be meeting on Monday, November 7th at 7:00 p.m. at Sabra United Methodist Church. So if anyone in Jerome Park, which is in the 5th Ward, would like to attend that, that would be fantastic. And other than that, I just have a reminder for voting. You can do early voting through Saturday, and Election Day is on Tuesday, so make sure you have a plan to vote.
Excellent. Councilor Vega?
I do not have too many updates. I work in politics, so you can imagine that this time of year is a little crazy for me, and I haven't had any free time to do anything fun, including the things in my neighborhood, and that's been going around in Morgantown. So my updates are not as great. But I did just want to remind folks that Election Day is November 8th. There are folks that are willing to give rides to people as well, and to make sure you have a plan to vote. That's about all I got. Thank you.
Councilor Kueke?
Excuse me, just a few things. SPEN has had its last meeting for the year, and we'll take it up next year again. So if you have that on your calendar, you can check it off this year. I had some people calling about various things, just normal community concerns. One was strange to me, and I'll ask here to see if anybody knows. Clear Fiber, is there a lawsuit ongoing with Clear Fiber?
Not with the city.
Yeah, not with the city.
But with someone else?
Yeah.
Because I'm hearing, I'm hearing from a community member.
I can't speak too much to it, but yes, there's a lawsuit.
Okay. I'll look more, I'd like to have some more information on that.
Yeah, it's not Comcast, but there is a lawsuit.
Thank you. That's helpful. The other is, I've had some complaints about Breeze Line and stringing the cable along our right-of-way. Have we had any problems that we're aware of?
I think we'll check into that. My understanding from, I saw your email to the assistant city manager, was that the city engineer was going to look into that, but they are, in general, obtaining permits and...
Doing it properly?
So far as I know. I mean, now, questions about aesthetics or location of poles and lines are, to some extent, a matter that council could regulate, although there are a lot of overlapping federal and state regulations that you have to be cognizant of. But I think the assistant city manager gave a brief introduction to what you might consider as well, and I'd be happy to follow up with you on that.
Very good. Thank you. And lastly, leaf pickup. I've got a mammoth tree across the way from me that's just threatening to dump every leaf in the world on my property. Is the pickup arrangement, is that something that is on our website, the phone call, the information available?
It is. It's on the front of the website, yes.
Thank you. I'll make use of it and pass it along. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Oh, my turn.
Councilor Bogannon?
Thank you for, Ms. Wade, for reminding me. It feels like forever since we gave these updates, and I forgot that since the last update, they did do the mock city council meeting, which how could I forget? I got the chance to stand up there and yell and air my grievances. It was awesome, along with Deputy Mayor Trumbull and Ms. Wade. The kids ended up loving it and asked to do it again. So thank you for pushing me to make sure that they did it. They loved it, so. And then, the other thing was, yesterday was my favorite day of the year, Halloween. I love it. We were able to shut down Madigan again, and between 300 and 400 trick-or-treaters went through. We did a parade to kick off our trick-or-treating around Jack Roberts Park, and at one point, the line for the parade stretched from West Virginia all the way to Madigan. So parents, kids, we're all very excited to go out and show off their wonderful costumes. And that's really all I have for this evening.
Wonderful. I think Halloween is also one of my favorite days of the year by far, and we had a lot of fun in our neighborhood. There was a parade on Saturday that I did not get to see, but son and grandson got to attend. And that was just organized by folks in the neighborhood, getting together and planning it. I think it's the third, third annual. And then trick-or-treating, which is way my favorite, I did get to attend, which was wonderful. And I just can't believe how many kids can move through a neighborhood. I live in the area behind Creps Park, and there were like packs of people, like 25 at a time, that were coming through. And one child was distressed because his costume was a duplicate of another's, and he kept saying that he was trying to hurry so he could maybe get ahead of the other one, so that he could be the one that some people saw first, so that they wouldn't say, "Didn't I already see you?" But anyway, people were very inventive, and the same crew of street workers, who appear to be middle-aged, middle, middle-school-aged females, were very much enjoying their construction outfits and taking selfies. And there were just so many different noteworthy, original, just kids just really enjoying themselves and happy, and I was so thankful that it was not pouring on everyone, although that sure threatened. And my husband enjoyed taking the mask off of his head and using it as a hand puppet, which was, which was popular with the really little ones. So anyway, because they weren't so scared, otherwise they were avoiding the green dinosaur head that was not scary, but was scary if you're little. So anyway, I just think it's a good reminder of what a wonderful community that we live in, that we can have so much activity outside trick-or-treating when some places, they're no longer doing it as much. So I'd say this is a great place to live. And that is it for me. I appreciate everyone that came and spoke, and as long as we can keep to some of the basic rules, I'm good. So thank everyone who participated this evening. And now we are going into, we can go into executive session. We do not need A, but we need to read into B. If someone's willing to do that, I can hand, hand anyone this.
I move the pursuant to West Virginia Code Section 6-9A for B to A. We enter executive session to discuss personnel matters.
Second. Thank you. Hall in favor?
All right.
All right. Thank you. And there we go.